This is Talk Back seven two one one two nine zero or one eight hundred five six eight five three zero nine.
This is News Talk KGVO AM twelve ninety and ninety eight point three FM KGVO Missoula's news and weather station.
Hey, welcome, welcome, ladies and gentlemen, the Wednesday, October second, two thousand twenty four edition of Talk Back is underway. Talk Back this morning is brought to you by Y West Storage out of the Y on two smokes way for pricing and availability, call four oh six five one zero zero five nine zero because of Y West, we're making room for you. Phillips Janitorial, their number four oh six two six zero six six one seven. If you have a business or a home or both, they do it all, and your satisfaction is one hundred percent guaranteed at Phillips Janitorial. Also brought to you by one two three Seamless Gutters, family owned and operated, offering gutter installations and this season gutter guards would be a good idea. Give them a call, four oh six two four zero two six six nine. They're protecting the foundation of your future. And by Harrington Surgical Supply. Feel confident in their discreet and knowledgeable guidance on a multitude of products and medical supplies.
The views and opinions expressed on Talk Back are not those of the staff management or advertisers.
Okay, welcome aboard, everybody. This is County Talk, and we have a full house, including folks on the phone. So I want to say good morning to Adrian Beck, first of all. Adrian, good morning, Director of Missoula County Office of Emergency Management. How are you, ma'am?
Good morning, Peter. Happy to be with you guys this morning from beautiful Butte, America.
Ah, so that's what you're doing. Dave Strohmeyer, Josh Lotnick, Juanita Verro, and also joining us in the studio, Matt Heimel, the planner and floodplain administrator for Missoula County. Welcome. Matt, you for the first time, how are you?
Doing great, thank you.
All right, so we are here to talk about the floodplain issue, the floodplain mapping update. We did get kind of a preview of this a week or so ago, and that's one of the reasons why we're really glad you're here today, because a lot of folks, there's a lot, there's a lot of clenching going on out there, because they're going to be redrawing the floodplain map. And so who should kick this off?
Who do you mean by they, Peter?
Well, whoever the admitted, what, isn't that Missoula County or the state?
Can I dive in and just set the stage?
Please do, yeah.
My understanding of this is not in depth. Matt is an expert, but I feel like I can adequately sketch out the boundaries of the story.
Okay, go for it.
So the state, that's the DNRC Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, in partnership with the federal management, Federal Emergency Management Association, FEMA.
Agency.
Agency, thanks. Are drawing up new floodplain maps. Floodplain maps have been in existence for many decades. The change right now is more around technology than anything else. When these floodplain maps were originally drawn, they had workers on the ground with transems and builders' levels, measuring elevations, literally how high is the earth in relation to the water. Now this is done with LiDAR, which is like radar, but it's sent down from a plane. It's incredibly accurate. The maps will be much more accurate because they're done with this level of technology. DNRC and FEMA in partnership make these maps. The county has the opportunity to adopt or not adopt the maps.
Okay.
Super important thing here, though, if we don't adopt the maps, FEMA still does. It's their maps. And if there is a flood and damage occurs, we as locals look to FEMA for financial help. We saw this in the flood in, I think it was twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. We also saw it in the tune of tens of millions of dollars in the pandemic. We do not have the resources to respond to major disasters. We need the federal government. We're seeing this in Asheville right now. If we say to FEMA, we see you guys made maps, but we don't like those maps, and we have a disaster, we are not eligible for their money.
Wow.
It's a, it's a big risk. And if a person is in the floodplain and you have a mortgage, your mortgage lender will demand that you get flood insurance. If we do not adopt the maps and a person is in the floodplain, even if we don't adopt the maps, it's FEMA's maps, they are on their own for providing, for getting flood insurance, which means the open market. If we adopt the maps, then the same folks are eligible for federal flood insurance, which is greatly discounted, specifically because the private market is so expensive in an area where you're most likely going to get flooded. So part of the anger is, Missoula County shouldn't do this, you're making, you're making my life difficult. This is happening regardless. This is about public safety. If we take the right steps here, we can, we can respond efficiently to horrible disasters. If we cross our arms and say, no, we don't like the federal government, we are on our own. Ask the folks in Asheville if they would like to be on their own.
Okay, we're going to take a quick break right now. By the way, the phone lines are open, and Adrian, you're welcome to pipe in anytime you want. Seven two one twelve ninety is our number. We're going to talk with Matt here in just a minute, because he's the planner and floodplain administrator. So we would definitely want to get his perspective, and we appreciate that opening salvo. We're going to come right back, seven two one twelve ninety is our number, one eight hundred five six eight five three zero nine. Phone lines are open. We're talking about flood insurance in Missoula County. I should say the floodplain update, the mapping update, and it's going to eventually lead to more or fewer people having to get flooded. Yeah, at both. So we're going to come right back with more of that. Hopefully, your phone calls and your questions, and I know you have them, we'll be back right after this.
In a world of complicated. That is brag with your latest weather, a few clouds keeping us warmer on Wednesday morning. And while the sun will come out during the day, highs won't get above the mid sixties. There's also more gusty winds developing in the afternoon. But with the clearing skies comes a return of the cold widespread frost expected Thursday morning, as lows drop below freezing, followed by another sunny day. In fact, the sun will continue through at least this coming weekend, except for a few clouds at times and a slight chance of showers Friday night. Daytime highs in the mid sixties to the mid seventies on Sunday and Monday.
Okay, we are back. This is County Talk, and folks have been, have been asking for County Talk for a while. I know because of your, because of your very busy schedule, it's very difficult for you to come here in person, and we really appreciate it, by the way. All right, so Matt, let's talk with you for a second. Tell us a little bit about Matt Heimel, if you would.
Sure, so I'm the floodplain administrator and a planner with Missoula County. I've been with Missoula County since twenty nineteen, in general with local government and the state since twenty fourteen. And really happy to serve the county and help people understand that flood risk is a very real hazard, but also something that we can work through to mitigate with either structural work or knowing where the best places for suitable growth is.
Now, can we talk a little bit about, about the process of redrawing these boundaries? This is something that the federal government is in charge of, and they work with the state and local agencies? Is that how that works?
Yeah, so it's one of the first things to recognize in the process is just how outdated the current floodplain maps really are.
Well, so how old are the floodplain maps?
So current data is actually from the late nineteen seventies, and our effective maps at this time are really based on mapping from the, from the early eighties. And they were digitized in twenty fifteen. That just means they went from paper to electronic maps. And in addition to the better technology to measure the LiDAR that Josh mentioned, we should recognize that the rivers change over time. And the real lifespan for a good flood study is about five years. So we have better.
We're a little bit behind.
Yeah, so we have better.
Well, let's put it this way, we got married, my wife and I got married in nineteen eighty. We're coming up on our forty fourth wedding anniversary, so I mean, it has been a while here.
Right, so with the better understanding of the amount of water, the hydrology, and the way that that water will behave in a flood, the hydraulics, we can develop a more accurate flood, flood study and a model. So whether or not we adopt maps or map the floodplain at all, the floodplain is there, the floodplain changes and presents a very real hazard. So by having these maps, we can have a very proactive look at what those flood hazards are. Property owners can know what that risk level is on their property. Anyone that wants to buy property can understand what they're really getting into and what kind of insurance requirements there may be. And also, emergency responders and, and folks in Adrian's office can understand what we need to look at when we are planning how to mitigate those natural disasters.
So, go ahead. Yeah, I was just going to ask you, the, the, the new survey has been completed, is that correct?
Correct, so back to the process question.
Yes.
In two thousand nineteen, the LiDAR data was, that was all flown and shot by airplanes. And then in about twenty twenty, the hydrology and hydraulic study was complete with the state, and we've had draft maps, we've had draft data that has an early look at what these floodplain maps can look at. And those have been out there, we've been helping people understand those maps. And now we're in a period where FEMA at the federal side reviews that data and vets it to make sure it's up to their mapping standards. The next step in this process is what is called a preliminary map product. So the preliminary maps are what are the most official early look that, that we will have. We are really hopeful that those will come out in fall, and then we'll have a lot of public notice and public engagement about that entire process, but that's the next step, our preliminary maps. Then throughout the rest of fall, winter and spring, we have those maps out there for the public, we educate people, we meet with people, we go out to the meetings and talk about the maps, a lot of talking about maps. And then we would expect next spring and summer to have more like open houses with state staff present as, as well.
Well, I will tell you, this, this, this comes at a time that's very difficult for homeowners, property owners right now, because, you know, property taxes have gone up, the property values have gone up, the values go up, and that means the taxes go up. And so this is just another, if you will, another brick in the wall, or another brick in the backpack for people who are in these areas, especially the ones who have not been in this area before, that find themselves, hey, we're in the floodplain. So, go ahead.
Right, and I think, and I think that is, that could be a tough spot for people to find themselves in, but one thing I really, I really like to highlight is, like I said, whether or not we have these maps, they, they are a floodplain. These models are the best data that we have to present what that flood hazard looks like. So it does present a proactive opportunity for some people to really think about what they want to have in certain areas of their property, or how they want to treat it.
All right, so Adrian, did you want to, go ahead, Adrian, please.
Well, I was just going to chime in to something that Matt just said, in that, you know, regardless of whether, you know, the county adopts these maps, or there's new lines on the map, I think the important thing here is that people have always been in the floodplain. And what this, what this does is it brings an awareness, and as I always say, you know, part of our job in emergency management is helping people understand what they should expect. And so by bringing awareness to this flood hazard, certainly is an opportunity for people to take proactive steps, to get better insurance, to look to grant opportunities, to perform mitigation on their properties. And all of that is possible when the county adopts these maps.
And so for, for folks who find themselves perhaps in the floodplain for the first time, and you talk about mitigation efforts, how can the county help these folks? And what, once they discover, you know, where on their property there is flood possibility, what can they do? Matt?
Well, one thing that I can help with, just at a very high level, is to talk with people, make sure that they understand everything, and also give some advice or recommendations for what, what to do. For example, someone finds themselves that the, that their house is in the floodplain maps, they can look at, say they have a crawl space with maybe some mechanical equipment down there, they can elevate those items to make sure that they're not prone to flooding. So there are steps people can take to make sure that their, their homes are reasonably safe.
Well, and, and maybe we'll, we might not have time right now, we can pick it up here in a second, but preliminary to even that would be if someone has a legitimate concern that they are mapped in a way that is not accurate. I'm sitting on a thousand foot bluff, and how could I be mapped in the floodplain or the floodway? Not to say that there's many examples of that, but that is something we should probably talk about, how folks can weigh in on that.
We are up against a break, and the phone lines are open, by the way. This is County Talk, and our county commissioners are here to talk to you. They are here waiting with their headphones on, waiting to get your calls and your thoughts about this, this specific prop, this specific topic of floodplain mapping update. It's coming out very soon, and the folks who are involved probably already know it. So give us a call, seven two one twelve ninety, if you have a question or a comment, or a concern, or a worry, or a fear. This, information is power, and so if you, if you would like to get the, the correct, accurate information about what's going on, give us a call, seven two one twelve ninety. The phone lines are open, one eight hundred five six eight five three zero nine. You can also use the KGVO app to send in your message. We'll be right back.
Question for you, would you rather pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month or fifteen dollars a month to work out with the same high quality gym equipment? At Planet Fitness, you can get top tier equipment for fifteen dollars a month. Plus, save twenty eight dollars or more when you join now during our Strong Choice Sale. Our weights weigh the same, you just don't pay the same. Enjoy free fitness training and twenty four hour access at most clubs, all in the judgment free zone. Join Planet Fitness today and save twenty eight dollars or more when you join for one dollar down, fifteen dollars a month, cancel anytime. Deal ends October tenth. See club for details.
When you're high, you feel different. You think different, you talk different, you draw different, you listen to music different, but you probably knew that. Problem is, you also drive different, and not in a good way. That's why driving high is illegal everywhere. So if you're high, just don't drive. Make a plan to get a sober ride, because if you feel different, you drive different. Brought to you by NHTSA and the Ad Council.
Hey, welcome back to County Talk. Phone lines are open, it's seven two one twelve ninety or one eight hundred five six eight five three zero nine. There, we're getting a call right now, but Adrian, Adrian Beck is joining us on the phone. And Adrian, I do know that a part of your major responsibilities are trying to handle the possibility of a flood and how it's going to be mitigated, not mitigated, but how you're going to let people know how to be safe in such an area. So tell us from your point of view, how important this is.
Yeah, absolutely. Back to what I was saying earlier is that, you know, that expectations management and being able to forecast what is likely to occur in a flood is really important for emergency managers, not only for kind of our, our pre-planning, but also for that, that response. And in the, in, in the throes of a flood, helping us understand where water is going to go, and where that next impact is going to be is critically important for kind of that in the moment planning that happens during a flood. And so, for example, in two thousand eighteen, when we had relatively historic flooding for Missoula standards, we were relying on the floodplain maps that existed at the time, and the river did not behave in the way that we expected, which puts us just a little bit behind the, the eight ball. What we found ourselves doing is running real time models with the hydrology that we were seeing, and they weren't matching what our floodplain maps were showing. And so I, I look forward to being able to have better, better technology at our hands and, and better data in front of us to, to help make better decisions.
All right, we do have a caller on the line, let's get Kevin on. Kevin, good morning, you're on with our guests on County Talk. What's your question, please, sir?
Well, good morning, I was wondering if somebody could please explain to a lot of us here in the county, exactly how did money get put into the warming shelter when we didn't have a chance to vote on it?
That's, well, that's not why we're here today. We're here to talk about the floodplain problem, but, but thank you for the call. Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. All right, so let, let's continue on. Now, Matt, one of the things that is in, is in the publication you put out, is who's going to be affected, right? And this is a rather large area of Missoula County, so if you wouldn't mind sharing just kind of where the floodplain is, is now, and where it's going to be with this new, new map.
Great, great question, thank you. So, yes, so for Missoula County, the areas that we're talking about updating the floodplain maps for are the entirety of the Clark Fork River as it goes through the county, the Bitterroot River within the county, and also Rock Creek. So any communities along there would be, would really be taking an interest.
Well, I would imagine, one of the things about living, we call Missoula River City, right? Obviously, we've got rivers, we've got the Bitter, we've got the Clark Fork, we've got so, so many things going on here in Missoula, and everybody likes to, you know, be close to the river, live near the river, it's a very attractive thing in real estate, you have a river view, that, that sort of thing. But what we don't think about is what's going to happen if a flood does occur, and the responsibility is ours to, to take care of that, so. Anyway, go ahead.
Yeah, that sounds like an Adrian question in terms of response, but before we go on, just to be clear, because I've heard some concerns from folks in the Swan, northeast corner of Missoula County, this process is not inclusive of that, is that correct, Matt?
That is correct, so this process is only limited to the Clark Fork, Bitterroot, and Rock Creek.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Adrian, did you want to address the other question?
Sure, I mean, I think that, you know, our, our natural amenities obviously draw people to want to live close to them, but they do pose a hazard, and I think that being able to accurately articulate what that hazard is and provide kind of what those expectations will be in a flood event helps people prepare, not only prepare for their home and their, their own safety, but ideally to perform necessary and, and quite frankly, most, most of times, simple mitigation measures to protect their investment for when and if that flood does occur.
What are some examples, Adrian?
Go ahead, what are some examples, as Juanita said?
Sure, so Matt already talked about one of them, what, which is just bringing your, your appliances, your, your furnace, your water heater, anything that may be below grade up to an elevation that is above the base flood elevation. In some cases, and we have homes that are built this way in Missoula County, in the foundations themselves, they have what we call flood flaps that allow the, the water to flow through that foundation without actually inundating the foundation and then causing damage to the structure itself.
Good to know. All right, we have folks waiting on the line right now, let's get Rich on the line. Rich, good morning, you're on with our guests on County Talk, go ahead, please.
So is the new floodplain once in a thousand years, or once in a hundred years, or what's the number on that?
So the floodplain that we're mapping is called the, the one hundred year flood, or the base flood. One hundred year flood gives a bit of a bad picture, because we're really talking about a flood with a one percent chance in any given year, otherwise called one hundred year flood or, or base flood. We do have the five hundred year flood elevations mapped as part of it, but the regulations and the insurance requirements only apply to the hundred year flood or that one percent chance flood.
Unless that we're going to live five hundred years, but, yeah. Go, go ahead, I'm sorry, interrupted, Rich, go ahead.
Is that going to apply to the camping regulations for near the river, like the high watermark? Should we apply that towards that ordinance?
There are some different regulations about there that talk about high watermark, we'd have to really see exactly what, what that is, but I don't think of, for like general camping, we, we look at it.
Rich, are you talking about camping regulations within the city of Missoula?
Yeah, the camping regulations, I believe, say high watermark, which we were talking about with floods, so I would imagine those would relate and may impact each other according to the local ordinance and your floodplain, so they kind of correlate to each other.
So the, the high watermark and the floodplain water elevations are, are different. High watermarks are typically like, like a seasonal measure or something that's, that's measured over a few seasons based on, not, not necessarily the hundred year flood. So they are different.
All right, Rich, thanks, thanks for the call. We're up against a break, we have Tom waiting with a, with a question as well, and we have several phone lines open, this is County Talk. Our county commissioners are all here, Adrian Beck is on the phone, Matt Heimel, planner and floodplain administrator for Missoula County is joining us as well. They want to give you the information you need to, to help you prepare, because if you do find yourself in the floodplain, there is, there are some things you're going to have to do. So give us a call, seven two one twelve ninety, get the, get the correct information from the people who know, who are standing right here, so we're going to, and also on the phone. We'll be right back after this timeout.
Brag with your latest weather, a few clouds keeping us warmer on Wednesday morning. And while the sun will come out during the day, highs won't get above the mid sixties. There's also more gusty winds developing in the afternoon. But with the clearing skies comes a return of the cold widespread frost expected Thursday morning, as lows drop below freezing, followed by another sunny day. In fact, the sun will continue through at least this coming weekend, except for a few clouds at times and a slight chance of showers Friday night. Daytime highs in the mid sixties to the mid seventies on Sunday and Monday.
Hey, welcome back to Talk Back, seven two one twelve ninety is our number, this is County Talk. Our county commissioners are all here in the studio with us this morning, we appreciate that, along with Matt Heimel, planner and floodplain administrator for Missoula County, Adrian Beck is also with us, and she is the director of the Missoula County Office of Emergency Management, she's here to chime in as well, and Tom has been waiting very patiently. Tom, good morning, you're on Talk Back with our guest, what's your question, please, sir?
All right, floodplain, what exactly is the floodplain? When, when do you take the elevation from the river, right? Because in, in June, it's going to be high, in September, it's going to be low. And how high of an elevation puts you out of the floodplain? And are these new mapping situations, are, are they planning on expanding the floodplain or reducing it?
Okay, thanks for the call, Tom, very good questions, and Matt's writing them all down. Matt, what, what do you think?
Okay, yes, all, all good questions, so first, what is a floodplain? So in the most general sense, a floodplain is any area that can be, that is not regularly inundated by water, that, that can be under certain weather phenomenon. Now, what we're working with in this program, in the National Flood Insurance Program, as I said to our earlier caller, is the base floodplain, or that area inundated by water in the flood event with a one percent chance in any given year. And that probability is calculated based on certain volumes of water that are modeled in the entire watershed. So we calculate these elevations using something called the base flood elevation. The base flood elevation is the, is that estimated water surface elevation in that hundred year flood. So even though that is correct, that the, that the river surface elevation is different in June from September to other months or any other year, what we, what we look at is actually the, this flood probability and this volume of water, otherwise known as peak discharge, in, in the actual flood event. So even though the water surface elevation is pretty low in a drought, we still have constant thresholds for what we will consider as different floods. And so other question was, what elevation would bring you above the base flood elevation or above the floodplain? And that would be being above the base flood elevation. So if land is above the base flood elevation, then it can be considered as out. However, there's a lot of nuance in that, because areas can be mapped as within the floodplain, but there can be small areas within FEMA's map floodplain, that is those areas shown on the flood insurance rate map, that are above that, that elevation. People have some recourse in that instance, they can have a surveyor demonstrate that they are above, and there's different paperwork that, that they can apply for called letters of map change to demonstrate that.
So Matt, so Matt, basically you're saying there can be islands of high water within the floodplain that are actually outside of the floodplain, even though the, the farthest line of the floodplain may be beyond their property? You know what I mean? Like, like an island of dry land inside of a flood?
That's, that's right, and FEMA will recognize that, and there's a process for people to go, to go down and show that those areas are out, and therefore be taken out for insurance purposes only.
And presumably, with the new mapping, there could be areas that were previously in the floodplain that are not, now no longer, and other areas that were not, that are.
I've heard the gentleman say, is it expanding or contracting? I would say it's changing. It's changing. Tom, Tom was asking, what is the actual height? What is the elevation where they'd be out of the floodplain?
So that, that's a good question, and it varies across the entire river, because as the river moves upstream, downstream, the base flood elevation will change with that.
The topography's not uniform down the length of the Clark Fork River.
So this is where visuals help a lot, and if anyone has, has questions or really wants to look at these elevations, it's all public, it's all out there, and they could always get in touch with, with me, I don't know if now is a time.
Yes, give your phone number, please, if you don't mind, or, or your email address, that'd be fine.
Yeah, if anyone wants to email for County Floodplain, it's floodplain@missoulacounty.us, just floodplain, F L O O D P L A I N, at missoulacounty.us. It's good, I can spell floodplain at least.
That's all right, that's all right. I think we have time to get another call in, this is, I believe it's Jeff is standing by. Jeff, good morning, you're on Talk Back, sir, what's on your mind?
Good morning, yeah, I just turned the radio on on my way to work here, so, and I'm catching this. In nineteen ninety, I bought ten acres on the Clark Fork, just below the mouth of Rock Creek, okay? And so I have riverfrontage, I got it surveyed, they told me, you can build here because you're out of the floodplain. And I put my certificate in and went through all the legal stuff with the health department. So it sounds to me like we're changing the rules now.
All right, in a situation, in a situation like that, is he correct? Now, not necessarily changing the rules, but when, when you adjust the floodplain, what, what he was out of the floodplain, now he might be in, so how does that work?
Right, the, the river changes over time, and as such, we need to change the floodplain maps. Doesn't necessarily mean that the rules entirely change, sometimes we have to change just to adjust to the, to the hazards that we know of at, at the time. For this specific instance, this is another great example where I would really invite to come and speak with me so that we can look exactly at what is going on here. Because while it is correct that the floodplains, that the floodplain map changes, this portion of property could be mapped as in the floodplain now, maybe there is some recourse, maybe there's some options for us to look at, or perhaps we need to really talk about how to take the new maps into consideration.
Sir, you're willing to talk to people on a one to one, case by case basis?
Absolutely, I, yeah, once they sit down.
What we're wanting to avoid is putting our heads in the sand as far as whether you are actually in the floodplain or not based on new data.
So one thing here, I just want to be clear on, we are not making new maps. We are mapping what
We are mapping what's actually happened.
Okay.
This is a response to natural conditions. This isn't a set of people in an office making a decision.
And there's a field process and an opportunity for ground truthing that's really important that people take advantage of.
Super important. And this gentleman may very well be outside of the floodplain. It could be that the elevations aren't accurate. He could challenge that.
Jeff, well, does that help you? Oh, I'm sorry. We have another Jeff on the line. I tell you, we're going to come right back. 721-1290 is our number. We'll get, we'll get the other Jeff who's waiting on the phone, and the phone lines are open. Now, please know that these fine folks are only here for another 18 minutes. So, and I know Josh has to skip out here pretty quick anyway. Yeah, so give us a call, 721-1290 or 1-800-568-5309. If you have a question about what's going on with the floodplain mapping update, that's why they're here. We're going to continue talking with them after this.
We were thrilled to be
Question for you. Would you rather pay $150 a month or $15 a month to workout with the same high-quality gym equipment? At Planet Fitness, you can get top-tier equipment for $15 a month. Plus, save $28 or more when you join now during our Strong Choice Sale. Our weights weigh the same, you just don't pay the same. Enjoy free fitness training and 24-hour access at most clubs, all in the judgment-free zone. Join Planet Fitness today and save $28 or more when you join for $1 down, $15 a month, cancel anytime. Deal ends October 10th. See club for details.
Life is full of moments. From the first steps, first loves, moments that make life special. And life can also bring us difficult and disruptive moments like a cancer diagnosis, which is why the groundbreaking work of Stand Up To Cancer is so vital. They know the problem of cancer won't be solved by one doctor, one lab, or one hospital. It takes collaboration. That's why Stand Up To Cancer brings together top minds from different fields to find new and better treatments so patients can thrive. So when it matters, we can all show up for moments of a lifetime. Please join Stand Up To Cancer and Myrtle Beach to help families get back to where they belong, making new memories for years to come. Please go to standuptocancer.org to see how you can join the mission.
Hey, welcome back to Talk Back. A few precious minutes left with our county commissioners. Again, we deeply appreciate their being here today, along with Matt Heimel. And now, before we get to Jeff's call, I know you wanted to address a specific point about the last caller.
Yeah, the last caller asked a really good question. This is
Who was also Jeff.
Who was also Jeff. Reflecting a situation where someone wasn't in the floodplain, the river has moved, the floodplain has moved, we've mapped, we're mapping that, and now they are in the floodplain. What do they do? Matt?
Okay.
Right, so these maps are not retroactive. So if somebody put in a septic system years ago, or they built a house, and they find that the new maps show that they are in a flood hazard area, it doesn't mean that they have to make changes. We're not requiring houses to be retrofitted just because they're in the floodplain maps when they might not have been previously.
Super important. But it is important that they get flood insurance.
Well, if they have a mortgage, their lender made demand. This has nothing to do with the county or the federal government. This is entirely about the relationship between the homeowner and their lender. Their lender may look at the maps and say, oh, my goodness, now you're in the floodplain. We own 75% of that house, we're the lender. We want you to get flood insurance.
And I would imagine there are mortgage lenders out there that are, that are proactive and looking at that and saying, okay, you get a letter saying, hey, from your insurance company, we need to update this because we have a financial stake in this.
And if we at the county adopt the maps, this person who's now in the floodplain and their lender is demanding they get insurance, has access to much more low-cost federal insurance.
Great. All right, let's get Jeff back on the line. Jeff, good morning. What's on your mind, sir? Please go ahead.
Hey, good morning. I think Jeff won, if I heard his question correctly, I think he was looking for a 50,000-foot view, a 50,000-foot view question. As you look at the county, will that mean a net increase or net decrease in the floodplain for the county? I think that's kind of a useful place to start. And also, I heard, my question is, I heard you say that this is modeled data versus actual data. So you're using a computer model that says what estimates what snowpack levels will be? Or are you using actual data from the measured snowpack over the past 100 years or however far back it goes to estimate the high water level for a floodplain?
Let's let him answer that. Thanks for the call, Jeff. Yeah.
So with, so with regard to the model, the hydrology data does take past conditions into account.
So that's actual conditions?
Yes.
And also, this person said you, DNRC and FEMA are doing the work, not Missoula County?
Correct.
And then his first question about
Increase, net increase versus net decrease?
So as far as net increase versus decrease, I'll have to take another look at our numbers to get the full picture, but I know that for different reaches of the floodplain, for example, we do have, for example, for the Bitterroot River in the county, more structures, that is insurable structures over 400 square feet, being removed than added. However, when we look at the Clark Fork River in the county, there are about 200 more structures being added than taken out. It's really important to point out, though, that we have large areas where there's no change. So that's one thing we can get into are the numbers, but I also really invite people to come in and take a look at that with me.
Is there a place online they can go, they can see that right now?
Yes, yes. These numbers should be on our missoula county voice.com.
Okay.
However, if they're hidden or not easy to find, I'll make sure that they are easy to find.
All right, sounds good. All right, Skip is up next. Skip, good morning. You're on with Matt and our county commissioners. Go ahead, please.
Good morning, Peter, and good morning, Matt. And I live down here in the Valley County, but I thought I'd ask about people that own property that have existing septic systems. At least down here in the Valley County, occasionally we have system failures. And because of the, what we have is a DEQ four rules, they're allowed to have a replacement system. If somebody failed that was not in the, in the floodplain before, but now is under your new calculations, are they going to have a right to put in a replacement system? And if so, is it going to automatically be elevated to a stage two, for instance? Or do they have to redo all groundwater monitoring or something before you allow that? It's going to affect a lot of distant people in different ways, especially if people were planning on, say, a family transfer and make a subdivision in their property, and then all of a sudden now for forever, according to the new map, it has to be for livestock only, something like that? Can you tell me a little bit?
That's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of variables, Skip. Let's let him answer that. We're running short of time, so go ahead, Matt, please.
So I think with regard to replacement of septic systems, that, that really is handled by the city county health department and the sanitarians there. As far as the septic replacement regulations, I cannot speak specifically to that right now. I think that's a really good question to get in touch with us specifically about.
So there's a distinction to be made perhaps between not being retroactive for existing infrastructure wastewater treatment and, and perhaps modifications, new structures, new wastewater systems. And that's where we need some more information, probably site-specific information, whether you could do what you're wanting or whether there'd have to be modifications because you're in the floodplain.
And you had just mentioned that, that people who have septic systems or whatever now, it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to have to dig everything up and start all over again, right?
No, not at all. And this gentleman asked a really good question because people's septic systems over time do fail, and they're required to, depending on which county they're in, et cetera, I guess this is state law, to have a replacement drain field. Could you access your replacement drain field if it's in a floodplain? We'd have to check with the health department.
You bet. We're going to come right back. We have Mark waiting on the line and a very few precious minutes left. And again, thank you to our county commissioners for coming on down and bringing Matt and, and of course Adrian Beck with us as well. We're going to come right back after this timeout. We're back on Talk Back. County Talk going on right now, and a lot of county talk going on during the break. So, but we want to get Mark's call on as quickly as we can. Mark, first of all, thank you for holding, sir. What's your question?
My question is, in 2012, I live in Florence, and I have eight-mile creek runs through our yard. In 2012, we had a flood, and my wife and I had to do sandbags and stuff. And since 2017, we haven't had any really bad runoff because our water comes from the snowpack off the Sapphires. And we do have two residences upstream northeast of us. They have water rights and they collect, I guess, the water, and we get the runoff from them. Because I don't, I still have a mortgage, and I was put into getting flood insurance. And I even paid for Mountain Plains LLC to come out and do a survey thing. And I never really got a letter back other than just a bill on it. But since then, we haven't had any runoff. This year, the runoff was maybe a day and a half. That's it. And I also think, you know, with the snow levels, because, you know, I pay attention to the Sapphire Mountains and the Bitterroots. The snow level, all the like glaciers and all the snow is all melted off of there. So my question is, I don't know whether I could be looked at to be revamped to see if I
Is there, is there, is there an appeals process, basically? Is that what you're asking, Mark? Is there a way to appeal this?
Yeah, or have someone come out and read, adjust to see what we, you know, deal with.
Sure, all right. Well, yeah, thanks for the call. Go ahead, Matt, please.
Yes, so for the Missoula County mapping process, there will be a appeal process. We're some time away from that. More information will go out, but there will be a process for appeals. And even after maps are effective, there is recourse for property owners to either hire a surveyor or demonstrate that they are above. I'd invite also this caller to get in touch with me. I'm also wondering if it might be over Valley County specific question.
Mark, are you in
Yeah, what county are you in, Mark?
He's gone, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So that
He said he lives up near the Sapphires, so I'm assuming he's not in Missoula County.
Well, and the other important point, we were talking about this a little during the break, is that there is a high degree of variability. So in terms of snowpack, weather conditions, we might have several years of drought and your creek might be running dry, but look at, look at Red Lodge, 1,000-year flood, one year, fire the previous year.
Exactly. Now, real, real quickly, we have about three minutes in our time left together. So the, let's talk about the most important salient facts here. The new survey has been done, or it's being completed, and people could look at it and see if they're in the floodplain, and if they are in the new floodplain, they need to take action. So what, what do they need to do?
Right, the updated floodplain maps are a more accurate representation of flood hazards that everybody should be looking at and taking pretty seriously. I really encourage people to get in touch directly with, with my office, the county planning office, to take a look at this and make sure that they understand what is going on. One thing that everyone can do, we talked about structural retrofitting a little bit before, but also, although there are instances where flood insurance can be required, if there's a mortgage, flood insurance can be the best way to protect one's investment in the wake of a flood, because homeowner's insurance does not cover flooding. So flood insurance, especially that provided through the National Flood Insurance Program, can protect one's investment. It's not only available to homeowners, but also renters can have contents coverage. So definitely look into flood insurance if you find yourself in a flood hazard area.
Now, you had mentioned, Dave, that it's significantly less expensive to do this through the federal agencies, is that correct?
That is my understanding, yes. So this, this is a way of being proactive.
Yeah, so is that true, Matt?
Yes, and one, one thing I'd also like to point out is, it's common for me to hear that the whole reason we're doing this comes down to having people pay for flood insurance. The way I see it, it really comes down to making sure that we have floodplain stewardship. We are stewards of the floodplain on the county end. We're partners in a whole comprehensive floodplain management program to make sure that everyone involved, whether it be the county or different environmental agencies or property owners or agriculture groups, that everyone understands that we're all part of this river system, and that we need to make sure that we're also mitigating impacts, make sure that there are no adverse impacts, but also everyone has a common understanding of what's, of what's happening. So there's a lot of information out there that some people might be seeing. So please always feel free to get in touch with County Planning Office or the City Planning Office.
We need, we need some contact. We have exactly one minute left.
What's that website again?
Yeah, website, phone number, everything.
Missoula County Voice.com. Also give a call to the County Planning Office, 258-4657, or email floodplain@missoulacounty.us.
Now, if we go onto that website, we'll be able to see what, what you brought with us today, right?
That's right.
All right, excellent. Well, gentlemen and ladies, thank you so much for coming in. Really appreciate it. County Talk is great, so is City Talk, and it's an opportunity that we have here to... Oh, we have another, we have another caller.
I'll just say thank you.
Adrian, Adrian, I'm so sorry. I'm looking away from the phone. Adrian, thank you for being with us.
Thanks, everyone.
My pleasure to be here today.
You bet. Any, any final words from you, Matt?
No, I mean, I think that Matt wrapped it up and took us home really well. The last thing I would say is that, you know, we can learn a lot from history, but mother nature always surprises us, and the better data that we have to kind of predict what she'll do is always helpful.
Excellent.
If folks have questions, please do reach out to the website, to the phone number that Matt mentioned. We want to be available to answer those.
Absolutely. I want to say thank you to all of you for coming down. Appreciate it. Please drive safely out there, and it's a pleasure to meet you, Matt. Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. Thanks, listeners.
And thanks to the county commissioners, and we are going to shift gears and talk, do a little politicking when we come back. Erin Ferris Olson is candidate for the Clerk of Montana Supreme Court. We'll be visiting with her in the next
This is Talk Back, 721-1290 or 1-800-568-5309.
This is News Talk KGBO, AM 1290 and 98.3 FM. KGBO, Missoula's news and weather station.
Hey, welcome back, everyone. It is hour number two of the Wednesday, October's second edition of Talk Back. Talk Back this morning is brought to you by Harrington Surgical Supply, where appointments are preferred for mastectomy fittings and custom compressions, and walk-ins are always welcome. Also brought to you by Y West Storage out of the Y on Two Smokes Way. If you need storage, here's their number, 406-510-0590. Because at Y West, they're making room for you. Phillips Janitorial offers both residential and commercial cleaning. Your satisfaction guaranteed as no job is too big or small. And also brought to you by 123 Seamless Gutters. They can handle everything that has to do with gutters, so you don't have to. 123 Seamless Gutters, protecting the foundation of your future.
The views and opinions expressed on Talk Back are not those of the staff, management, or advertisers.
We are shifting gears. First of all, I'm Peter Christian. That is Mr. Nick Questionson over there. Good morning, Mr. Nick.
Good morning.
And joining us on the phone right now, we are privileged to have Erin Ferris Olson. She's a candidate for the Clerk of Montana Supreme Court. Erin, welcome to Missoula and welcome to Talk Back. How are you?
Thank you so much. I, oh, this is my favorite season, so I'm loving back to school and fall. It's just a beautiful time to be in Montana.
You got it. All right, so let's talk a little bit about the Montana Supreme Court. They always seem to be in the headlines, especially either right, right after the legislative sessions or during, during that time after, when certain bills that are passed and signed get, they come before the Montana Supreme Court. Many ways, many times, they're, they're saying, well, we've got to put a hold on that because we don't agree with this, that sort of thing. So, but you are not running for the Supreme Court. You are running for the Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. So if you wouldn't mind sharing with us just exactly what that office is all about?
Yeah, thank you for asking, and that's correct. It's a unique office. We are the only state in the country that has an independently elected clerk of the Supreme Court. And the history actually dates back all the way to our 1889 Constitution, when all positions were elected and partisan within the judiciary. And over time, um, the partisanship changed. Um, the Supreme Court judges became nonpartisan, ultimately judges across the state became nonpartisan. But the clerk of the Montana Supreme Court was retained, albeit not in the 1972 Constitution. Um, the clerk is a legislative position, um, as a partisan elected position. And really the theory behind that is that, you know, especially back in the 1800s, the Supreme Court were these rogue people that went into a room and building and made decisions. And there was just not very much clarity around or transparency around how they made their decisions or what the timeline would be for making decisions. And so the clerk is really there to interface with the public, to protect the confidentiality and the decision-making process of the court, but provide that really important interface to the public, um, so that you can kind of maintain that trust and transparency with the court.
Now, Erin, if you, by the way, the phone lines are open. If you would like to talk with Erin Ferris Olson, candidate for Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. Now, I understand that this is a partisan position. You're running as a Democrat, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. It has always been a partisan position. Um, but you know, I, I ultimately, I've worked in access to justice, um, which is maybe a, a bit of a term of art. Um, but really I've worked helping people who are representing themselves in court across the state. I've worked with judges and clerks of court on how to increase court efficiency so that justice can be served in a timely and efficient manner. You know, we've said throughout the course of our history that justice delayed is justice denied. And so, you know, my, my work has really been in improving the court, uh, which I really don't see as a political matter. Um, when people come into either a self-help center across the state or they come to me, I am a licensed attorney. Um, I don't provide a lot of direct representation, but I do help people as a mediator and help people access information to resolve their issues. When people come to me, I don't ask their politics. You know, it's really for me, it's about helping everybody, regardless of their political background, um, understand and navigate the court system effectively and efficiently. So yes, I am running as a Democrat. The currently elected clerk, um, is a registered Republican. And so, you know, that's, that's kind of where, where I'm at. And I, you know, my, my values of fairness and equality, I think, you know, underscore my commitment to being fair and impartial as a clerk.
Well, I, you know, the, the current clerk is Bowen Greenwood. And I've had a chance to visit with him several times, just researching stories. And he was always very easy to work with. But tell, tell us why you believe that you, you should succeed him?
Well, the, the really big difference between Mr. Greenwood's perspective on the position and my own is that he very much believes that his role is to help certain attorneys or certain people over others based on their political affiliation. And, um, Mr. Greenwood isn't an attorney. You don't need to be one to be in the role. And I'm, I'm not at all saying that, that, that you need to be an attorney. But what anybody who either is an attorney or understands the law well, um, knows that when you create legal precedent, that precedent moves forward into the future. And so if you're deciding a case or you're taking a side just because of a political bend, you can't control who that hurts down the road. And ultimately, it really hurts everybody. Because, you know, I've been in the position, I, I was a law clerk for the Montana Supreme Court. And I've been in the position where I've seen, you know, cases where I might, you know, my values might be better represented by one of the parties in the case. But if I make a decision because I like that party better, it can have lasting implications that ultimately hurt, you know, my, my interest down the road. And so that's where I really think his approach to the position is harmful to everybody who's potential, who is or would potentially be before the Montana Supreme Court. I'd also offer that I'm not really sure that Mr. Greenwood ultimately wants this job. I mean, he ran for Secretary of State six months into the role, you know, he promotes a lot of things that don't actually relate to the position. So, you know, I, I just think that my background is very uniquely committed to serving the clerk of the Supreme Court's office really well.
Okay, with that, we're up against our first break and we do have Skip waiting to visit with you. By the way, the phone lines are open. This is an elected position, uh, for the Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. And our guest on the phone right now is Erin Ferris Olson. She's talking with us from her home in Helena. And we would love to have your thoughts and comments and questions. Uh, she's here until 10 o'clock this morning to answer your questions, so you'll have a better idea of whom you'd like to vote for. So the number is seven two one twelve ninety or one eight hundred five six eight five three zero nine. You can also use the KGBO app. We're coming right back after this.
Montag with your latest weather, a few clouds keeping us warmer on Wednesday morning. And while the sun will come out during the day, highs won't get above the mid sixties. There's also more gusty winds developing in the afternoon. But with the clearing skies comes a return of the cold widespread frost expected Thursday morning as lows drop below freezing, followed by another sunny day. In fact, the sun will continue through at least this coming weekend, except for a few clouds at times and a slight chance of showers Friday night. Daytime highs in the mid sixties to the mid seventies on Sunday and Monday.
Meet Ingrid, fiery spirit, caring grandma, proud trucker.
I've logged more than four million miles in my truck. If people knew what I know, lives could be saved. I was driving outside of Ohio when a gentleman stopped suddenly in front of me. But it takes my 80,000 pound truck 200 yards to stop. I'd given myself extra room, but it's not a chance worth taking.
It's our roads, it's our safety.
Okay, we are back on Talk Back, seven two one twelve ninety is our number, one eight hundred five six eight five three zero nine. Peter Christian here, Nick Questionson, taking your phone calls. Our guest on the phone is Erin Ferris Olson. She's a candidate for Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. And Skip has been waiting through the break. Skip, good morning, you're on with Erin, go ahead, please.
Well, thank you, Peter. Um, and Erin, um, the Supreme Court situation in our state of Montana just practically makes my mind explode with the opportunities we have right now to fill two, uh, Supreme Court Justice positions, one Supreme Court Chief Justice. And the other, uh, is to, uh, we have a choice now to make for clerk of courts. And so there's two anomalies that Montana is, I believe, famous for. Because one, you mentioned, and that is we're the only state that elects a clerk of Supreme Court. The other is we have the most overturned Supreme Court, uh, in, in the country, which, you know, I guess you can wear that as a badge of honor somehow, I don't know. It's crazy. So my question to you would be, because we have those two anomalies, do you figure that it's, it's a good thing that we are the only state that elects the position you're running for? Or, and, and then also, do you, do you believe that, uh, maybe, uh, we should go to a different system of how, uh, how we do our judging when they're elected? For instance, should we, should we, as most people would understand it, put an R or D next to the name on the ballot? Is there a couple of things that I'd, I'd like to hear where you stand about our present condition of our Supreme Court? Because, because it turns out to, it's been an oligarchy and it's, and it's something that the people need to learn about the candidates running for Supreme Court itself. But then also, what are your job description, uh, cliff notes? If you, if you get a job and, and, uh, and Chief Bowen, who's been doing a great job since 2018, I'd like to know what, what he's really doing wrong so that you have to run against him. So thank you.
Okay, thanks for the call. A lot, a lot, a lot of meat on the plate there, Erin, so please go ahead. And thank you for the call, Skip.
Yeah, thanks for the call, Skip. And yeah, there is a lot in there, um, so, uh, hold me accountable. If I don't get to all the questions, feel free to throw them back at me. Um, first of all, just in terms of partisanship in the court, you know, I, I, I really believe in the separation of powers and the court's ability to hold accountable our legislative and executive branches. And so, um, I, I very strongly believe that the court should remain nonpartisan. And, you know, politics is everywhere, you know? I'm not naive enough to think that people don't, you know, bring, you know, their own political perspectives and personal beliefs into whatever they do. But I think how we do our job, I mean, what I've noticed in the other roles I've served is that I'm able to work with people across political and personal and religious divides because I figure out what we have in common and that's what I focus on. And so as clerk of the Supreme Court, you know, I'd be focusing on making sure that the rules are applied equitably, that the court is efficient. I'd go a step further to say that as a statewide elected clerk of court, I could work with district court judges and clerks across the state, um, on some of the court efficiency matters that I currently work on in my private capacity, helping self-represented litigants before the court, which is still a bulk of the workload, even at the Montana Supreme Court level. Um, I don't see Bowen Greenwood doing that. And so those are things that I would, I would commit time and energy to doing to actually improve our court and not just keep it, you know, kind of status quo. Um, there's a lot of people that day to day have to navigate the court system. Um, and it holds up their lives in a significant manner. And I think we're doing a disservice to everyday citizens and communities across Montana if we're not trying to figure out how to navigate, how to help them navigate the system better. And that requires partnerships with the Supreme Court Administrator's Office, with other entities like the State Bar, Montana Legal Services Association. And I'm a relationship builder. I show up, I connect, and I work on solutions. And those aren't things that I see our current clerks doing that I would, I would do. So I would take it a step further in that regard. Um, what else, what are some of the other questions? Um, uh, nonpartisanship.
Oh, God, go ahead, Nick, please.
Uh, he, he mentioned that, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, you mentioned is it time to reconsider the role? Um, I would say absolutely. What, what I would really like the legislature to reconsider is the partisanship nature of this right. And that can be changed by a legislative bill to make it nonpartisan. Um, I don't think politics play a role in the court. Um, and so, or, and, and this is, it's, it's the difference between the reality and what we're striving for. And if we want to strive for the separation of powers that our founding fathers determined so long ago is the best route for our democracy or republic, then we need to strive for nonpartisanship. I need to be able to every day look at where politics are coming into play and figure out how I can set that aside to make a decision in the moment that's going to create the, you know, the best scenario for the Montana Supreme Court to make a decision based on law. And I think there's a lot of different, um, so I, although I will say that I think voting for positions provides a level of public accountability that I'm very supportive of. Um, so I guess I would go as far as to say, I think it should be nonpartisan, whether it continues to be elected or somehow appointed. I think there's a lot of different models that, that we could look to. Um, and I, I haven't looked into all the different options, but I would definitely support it being nonpartisan in the future.
Well, I, I will say the US Supreme Court is definitely political, even though they're not, you know, Republicans and Democrats, but they're appointed by whoever happens to be sitting in that presidential chair. And, and as we have, as we have seen, there, there have been, you know, so many efforts or threats, if you will, to say, hey, well, we're going to expand the court. We're going to do all sorts of things, add Washington DC or, or as another state. Uh, there are, you know, on a national level, it, politics is completely mixed up in the US Supreme Court. But here in Montana, we're trying to keep it as nonpartisan as possible. But tell you what, we're up against a break. Ryan is waiting to visit with you. We're going to come right back. By the way, the phone lines are open. Our guest on the phone is Erin Ferris Olson. She's candidate for Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. If you have a question or comment, we would love to hear from you right after this.
Montana State News Network.
I'm Dennis Braga, Hill County man implicated last year in the strange disappearance of an Arizona teen could be headed to prison for 100 years after pleading guilty to child sex abuse. Prosecutors say 37-year-old Edmund Davis had numerous images of child porn on his phone, some involving infants and toddlers. Haveer Police discovered the phone last year when they were checking out reports. The 14-year-old girl had been living with him since 2019. National Weather Service forecasters warning it will be another day of fire weather on the eastern plains with more gusty winds, warm temperatures, low humidity and very dry conditions. Humidity, which is a major factor in fire starts, won't be in the dangerous single digits, but in the low teens later today. That brings red flag warnings are up for the southeastern corner of the state, although a cold front pushing in will lower temperatures throughout the day. Winds could still gust up to 40 miles per hour. Mile City deserves special mention for its dramatic weather shift the past few days. After setting a new daily record of 100 degrees on Sunday, they dropped to just 37 degrees on Monday morning. Conservation groups are expressing concern after a video surfaces on social media this week. A cell phone clip was shared by the Big Hole Watershed Committee and shows the side-by-side barreling into the river at a fishing access site and then tearing around in the riverbed. The group is concerned because of the very low condition of the Big Hole River this year, which is causing stress on fish and wildlife. They say the site is ground zero for spawning brown trout now, and such a stunt violates state law. The FWP is investigating.
When you see the emergency lights on the side of the road, slow down and move over. It's dangerous for first responders to help motorists on the side of the road while cars are buzzing by at 80 miles per hour. In Montana, when you see emergency lights on the side of the road, you must slow down and move over or face a fine or even jail time. It's the law. When you see someone pulled over, slow down and move over.
Sponsored by the Montana Department of Justice.
To protect his home and family from disaster, Steve used courage, wisdom and his camera phone. Way to go, Steve. By simply taking digital pictures of his family's important documents, Steve can always have them stored safely online, no matter when disaster strikes. Learn other simple ways to protect your home and family before a natural disaster at ready.gov. That's ready.gov, a message from FEMA and the Ad Council.
Adopt U S Kids presents, what to expect when you're expecting a teenager, learning the lingo.
GOAT, G O A T, acronym stands for greatest of all time. As in spaghetti sandwiches for dinner, they're my fave. Dad, you're the GOAT.
You don't have to speak teen to be a perfect parent. Thousands of teens in foster care will love you just the same. Visit adoptuskids.org. Brought to you by the US Department of Health and Human Services, Adopt U S Kids and the Ad Council.
Welcome back to Talk Back. And our guest on the phone right now is Erin Ferris Olson. She's a candidate for the Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. And Ryan has been waiting very patiently to ask a question. So Ryan, you're on with Erin, please go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to ask Erin about the visibility of the court in terms of the public seeing what the court does. It's very easy to see the political battles that get played out at the court. But maybe would you speak a little bit about some of the everyday things that happen that maybe don't get much visibility, why they're important? And what do Montanans get when they're done well?
All right, thanks for the call. Good questions. Thank you, Ryan. Uh, so Erin, please go ahead.
Yeah, that's a great question. And, you know, a lot of the questions I get are, what does the clerk of court do? And people get a little nervous asking a question, but I always say, you know, it's, it's a great question because for many years, the clerk's position wasn't political. Um, it's always been a partisan race, but there were not issues. Uh, we had the same clerk of court for 30 years. And, um, although he was elected in a partisan race, he took a lot of care to make sure that the way the job was carried out was not creating any sort of bias. Um, and, you know, also I say, you know, if it's done well, people don't have to pay attention to who's in the office or how it's being, how the role's being carried out. And, um, you know, so the clerk, our Montana Supreme Court sees every issue before it. Um, and we just have district courts and then the Montana Supreme Court, so intermediate appellate court. So anything that gets passed or appealed past the district court level comes and it goes through the Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court's office. Um, some of the things that really need to be improved are the way attorneys and the public can find court information. Um, our web, the Clerk of Montana Supreme Court's website is just very garbly in terms of being able to actually access court and case information. And so that would be, I've worked with the IT department at the Montana Supreme Court and State Law Library before. Um, and I would, you know, first off, just start to address the, the need for a better way of communicating about court cases. And really it's the status of the case. So when a case comes in, you see if it complies with the appellate rules. Um, as a law clerk for the Montana Supreme Court, I have done that before, done that appellate review. Another best practice that Bowen Greenwood has abdicated since being in office is it used to be that the clerk of the Montana Supreme Court would notify the court if there was a timely matter. So, you know, an initial complaint is filed and then subsequent, you know, documents are filed, the response, the, um, the reply and all of those, once briefing, there's a timeline for all of that briefing to take place. And so the clerk could and used to notify the court, oh, we've got a timely manner. An example would be, you know, a ballot initiative and the language on a ballot initiative that's being contested or anything that's affecting something that's, you know, going to affect how our democracy works in some other realm. Like the clerk can say, hey, we have a timely matter filed here. So heads up, make room on your court schedule to be able to decide that quickly once all of the briefing schedule is completed. That's something that's no longer being done in the Bowen Greenwood Clerk of Court office. And that I would, you know, reinstate some of those practices so that we could really make things move forward in a timely manner. But those rules that you review, you know, there's also things that, um, there's, there's some discretion there in terms of does this lack of compliance with the rule, for example, oh, they forgot a fax machine. You know, I don't know about, about your listeners, but I'm not using a fax machine that often anymore. Does that really affect the court's ability to make a good decision on the case? And our current clerk of office, our current clerk of court has made a practice of just automatically rejecting files, even for minor discrepancies. And what that does is it delays a case. And so you're just kind of delaying things when there's an opportunity to resolve an issue and still have a case be presented to the court in a timely manner. And so we're just seeing some like best practices, um, that were existing in the office for many years that have been abdicated under the current clerk. And so I'd like to get in there and really help. And so I'd like to get in there and really help us figure out, like, how do we make the court run more efficiently so that justice isn't delayed for Montanans across the state?
Does that help you, Ryan?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for the call. All right, we, we are up against a break. Uh, all of our phone lines are open. If you have a question or a comment for Erin Ferris Olson, she's candidate for Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court, love to hear from you. Uh, 721-1290, 1-800-568-5309. You can use the KGBO app as well, and we'll continue with our conversation here in just a moment. If you're planning on
Buck it up.
It's not a big deal.
Snap out.
Just get over it.
We've all heard it, but if you're experiencing extreme stress, it's not just in your head. It can affect your entire body, because toxic stress can hurt us physically without us even knowing it. If you've lost a job, worry about your next meal, or have trouble making it through the day. If you're feeling the effects of stress, we can help. Text STRESS to 211-211 to find a solution.
Hey, welcome back to Talk Back. 721-1290 is our number. Phone lines are open. We're talking with Erin Ferris Olson from Helena, candidate for the Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. And, uh, I, I, some of the notes that, that you sent, uh, is that, it says, "The clerk's authority is narrow but important." So if you wouldn't mind just kind of clicking that off a little bit and tell us, uh, what, why, why you believe it's narrow, and what is so important about it?
Right, well, that actually kind of builds off of my response to Ryan's question. You know, I mean, really what the clerk controls is filings before the clerk's office, and then the publishing of opinions, and the managing and storage of files. And that is not a broad scope of authority. The clerk is not making opinions, you know, and, and this is where, this is where I have a really hard time with our current clerk, is he's out there talking about how he helps attorneys prepare for oral arguments, that he helps them prepare for questions before the court, and that is wholly outside of the authority of the clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. Not only that, it's the unauthorized practice of law if you're not an attorney, which Mr. Greenwood is not. And so, you know, I, I have a hard time with his approach to trying to make the clerk have more of an impact on judicial outcomes than the clerk should. The clerk's role is to make sure that everything is filed in a way that the Supreme Court can make a decision. Um, and so, you know, I, but that's really important, right? Because if you try to take a bend where, you know, maybe it's not a fax number, as I mentioned before in that scenario, but it's that, you know, a party has actually prepared their brief in a way that makes it look more like, for instance, like propaganda than a legal brief, right? With like different forms, or different emphasis, or hasn't provided a full citation for some of their cases is another thing, right? So you can't actually, the court can't actually research the precedent that's being cited in the case, for example, then you have a problem, right? Because then the court isn't actually able to do a legal review of the case, um, or one side is potentially already from the get-go have an advantage against another party. And that's, and that's when people talk to me about, especially Mr. Greenwood's campaign tactics, saying that, oh, he helps attorneys with their filing, he helps conservative attorneys with their filing, um, or certain parties that, like, agree with his specific, um, agenda, you know, I, I think there's a harm that's done, um, in taking that approach to the position. So, you know, it's narrow in that it's just a review of the rules, it's making sure things are all filed appropriately, stored appropriately, but if you try to go outside the bounds of that, um, it's a problem. And making sure that all of that is done well, that's where I would say it's still very important.
Well, no, people look at, look at the Montana Supreme Court, obviously it's the highest court in Montana. Of course, there, there are appellate courts above the, the Montana Supreme Court, but how does a case get to, uh, the Montana Supreme Court? Obviously, it starts, say, in Missoula District Court or Justice Court or whatever, then it goes up and up and up, and how, how does that work? And, and how do you just, how to decide which cases to take and which not to, uh, not to adjudicate?
Well, that's an interesting distinction between our Montana Supreme Court and, say, the U.S. Supreme Court. The Montana Supreme Court sees every case before it. It doesn't grant certiorari and say, this case we're going to see, and these were not, like, the U.S. Supreme Court. So, I, I mean, just as you stated, Peter, it starts, you know, from the district court. Well, there could be something that starts as low as a justice court and then gets reviewed by district court. Um, but then, depending on the outcome at district court, um, that outcome can be appealed to the Montana Supreme Court.
All right, and so, now, please go ahead. Okay, uh, now, as far as, as far as your office goes, uh, are, are there certain, certain aspects of, of, of the job that you're, you're trying to, to be elected to, uh, that, that you feel are perhaps, uh, have been neglected, or perhaps are more important than others?
Yeah, well, I mentioned a couple of best practices, both like having a thoughtful and discerning review of cases versus just rejecting things and requiring there to be more paperwork and more delay, um, that is happening now, that hadn't happened before, and that I would like to address. I also mentioned, um, the, like, notifying the court of timely manners. Um, another thing too is the relationship, that, you know, court efficiency is not fully in the realm of any one entity or department. And if we look across the state, you really need cooperation and collaboration amongst courts, district court judges, Montana Legal Service Association, a lot of people who are accessing the court, the court administrator's office, and I've worked in those circles throughout my career. Um, I spent a number of years managing the, the statewide self-help program. I worked at the state bar, working with attorneys all across the state. And so, you know, I just think there's a lot of opportunity to make things more efficient for people that's not being taken advantage of now. I can tell you that, um, you know, just from talking to colleagues in the field, that Mr. Greenwood doesn't come to the conferences where these practitioners get together or talk to them necessarily. And if we're not building relationships and understanding, you know, district court judges across the state are kind of their own different jurisdictions, and there's some of the issues that come up at the Supreme Court level is where some of the local processes don't exactly align with the way things operate at the Supreme Court. And so you need to be able to pick up the phone and reach out to that district court clerk and find a solution. And so those are the types of tactics that I know aren't being taken today with our current clerk, um, that I've done throughout my career, and I'd be very eager, I'd be very eager to do.
Excellent. Now, are, are there, are there, uh, are there cases that come before the court, uh, that you would have anything to do with, aside from just simply making sure that all the, uh, that everything is correctly formatted before it's presented to them? Or how, how does that work? In other words, if a case comes in that needs, that needs work, and you have to send it back, how, how does that work from your perspective?
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, so, okay, so there's like some entities that appear before the Montana Supreme Court more often than others. An example would be the Office of the Appellate Defender. So those are the attorneys that work for the state that are public defenders, but they only operate at the Supreme Court level. If you're seeing that, like, three or four times, the appellate defender's office hasn't included a fax number, let's just go back to that example, it'd be much easier to reach up, reach the phone and call the office and say, hey, I've been noticing your filings don't include this thing, can you make sure that they do from here on out? Instead of just rejecting them and causing all of those filings to go back and be, like, re, you know, reissued, seven more copies made, refiled, you know, I mean, that's state time and resources that are essentially being wasted because it could, we could be a lot more efficient. So that's just one example.
Gotcha. All right, we're, we're up against a break, and Harry is waiting to visit with him when we come back from the break. By the way, the phone lines are open. If you have a question for Erin Ferris Olson, she's a candidate for the Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court. If you have a question or comment, give us a call. We'll be right back after this. Hey, welcome back to Talk Back. Peter Christian here, Nick Questionson producing Talk Back, taking your phone calls, and our guest, Erin Ferris Olson, the candidate for Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court, running as a Democrat, and Harry has been waiting through the break. So, Harry, good morning. What's your question, please?
Yeah, good morning, Erin. Yeah, first of all, I, I agree with you that this is something that shouldn't be a partisan post, it's, it's just ridiculous that it is. But also, I hope that you get, uh, out there, I mean, because I really, really, I think you know what you're talking about, it sounds like you really know what you're talking about, you're really on the ball, and, uh, I hope you get out, I mean, to be able to get your, uh, name out there better, because, I mean, I, this is the first time I've heard of, you know, you and, uh, you're running, and, uh, that you're unfortunate that you're in a Republican state, and just because your name has a D behind it, most people are going to say, well, no, we're not going to vote for you. So, and, you know, you're really, I seem really on the ball, and, uh, I understand that probably your campaign doesn't have a lot of money to spend, so, but, you know, I really hope you get out there and let people know that you're there and what, what you're able to do.
All right, Harry, thanks for the call. So Erin, a little, a little pat on the back there, so, uh, your response?
Yeah, oh, thank you so much, Harry, I appreciate it, and you're, you're spot on. It's tough as a first-time candidate to get my name out there, but, you know, I also, like, obviously I'm running to win. Um, I also think about this as a long-term part of creating a conversation and raising awareness. I mean, not a lot of people know what the clerk does, not a lot of people know that it's legislative, and that we could make it nonpartisan if we want to, you know? And so I have also been thinking about, like, outside of November 5th, you know, what are we building and what are we working towards? Um, it, when I say we, it's like me and my family, and it's a lot of commitment, but, you know, I, I can't help but think about my kids' future here in the state, um, and I agree with you, and I, I hope that regardless of the outcome on November 5th, um, we're, we're raising awareness and, and helping Montana get to a place where we can continue to preserve that, that nonpartisanship in the office.
All right, sounds good. That means Jeff is waiting now. Jeff, good morning, you're on with Erin. Go ahead, please.
Hey, good morning, Erin. As I've listened this morning, um, at times it seems like you're almost accusing your opponent of less than ethical behavior, in that, uh, one example you gave was favoring certain, uh, people appearing before the court, uh, over others, if they're conservative versus progressive. Um, is that something you're actually saying? And if not, uh, or if so, could you give examples? And if not, what would distinguish you from him? Thanks.
All right, thanks for the call, Jeff.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff. Um, so it's actually Bowen Greenwood who's saying that he helps certain attorneys over others, and I do believe that that is unethical within the position. And so, um, I'm also just aware, because I, you know, I'm able to track public records, that, you know, what he has said is that he helps Attorney General Austin Knutson get pro-life legislation through the Montana Supreme Court. Um, I've noted that there's been a couple of public information requests that have been submitted, asking Mr. Greenwood exactly what his correspondence has been with the AG's office, or what actions he's taken, and those have been denied by his office, which is a little disappointing because he often says that he's about transparency, but that's not very transparent to deny, to deny an information request about a public statement that you've made over and over again. And he, and, you know, it's, it's consistently what he says on the campaign trail, there was, you know, you know, so you can, that, that information is pretty readily, readily available. There's a video of him campaigning on my website, erinformontana.com, if you want to see it for yourself. Um, so, you know, it, it's his words, I don't know all of the details of how he's doing that, and he's obviously unwilling to disclose the details of how he's doing that, but it definitely does concern me, and I consider it not only an unethical practice, but, you know, a threat to our judicial process.
Well, I, I will tell you that, that we are, we are regularly told by, um, many of the Republican officials in state government that, uh, there, there needs to be a change in, in the Montana Supreme Court, because, uh, bills are passed, uh, they get sometimes super majorities, and they, and, and then they go before the Montana Supreme Court, and they are either put on hold, or put in, in abance, or defeated, or whatever it might be. Uh, and there, there's a, you could, you can understand the frustration, uh, with certain forces who are saying, th, this is the will of the people. I mean, the people elected the legislature, and they, they passed this bill, so, you know, uh, and the Montana Supreme Court, quote, is standing in the way, end quote. How do you, how do you see that?
Well, I think there's a, yeah, I think, well, so I think that the, the perception of the Supreme Court being, uh, in the way, and adversarial to the legislature is an unfortunate perception. Um, having worked at the Montana Supreme Court, you know, I would just note that, like, my opponent is just throwing fuel on the fire of partisanship. He's called, you know, he's said things about the Montana Supreme Court that just are, just are blatantly not true. You know, we have registered Republicans, we have Jim Rice, who served as a Republican in the legislature on the Montana Supreme Court, and, you know, Justice Rice, although, you know, I haven't always agreed with some of his perspectives, I think he's a really good justice, and he does a really good job discerning the law. So I, I think the misperception there, though, is that the court is there to interpret the Constitution, they're not there to fight or rubber stamp things from the legislature. And that's, and that's really core to our separation of powers. And I think in Montana right now, we have a situation, as you mentioned, where there was a super majority, and there were a lot of laws passed, that did not comply with our constitution, and the legislature knew that, right? Like, there were notes in the bills that they weren't constitutional, and the, and instead of making an effort to try to pass laws that would pass constitutional muster, they said, we're just going to do this the way we want to do it, and then the focus is on the Montana Supreme Court supposedly stopping those. And so I just, you know, I, I would encourage people to think, like, you know, politics change. What if it were different? What if there was a Democratic majority, and they were, and the Democrats are passing unconstitutional laws that were threatening freedoms that are important to conservatives? Would you want the court to be interpreting the Constitution the way it was approved, you know, in 1972? Or do you want, um, either rubber stamping or, or, you know, trying to be adversarial to the legislature? You know, I think, so, so that's, you know, I, I just really think the separation of powers is super important, and that we need to respect that we have a court whose job is to interpret the Constitution. And so, you know, that's what I hope people look for, when you mentioned early on in the show that there's positions to fill. I would look at the record of those judges that are being considered for those positions and ask, is this somebody who I could trust to interpret the Constitution and my very important rights under the Constitution, regardless of who's in the legislature, regardless of, you know, who's, who's before them, making, making an argument or making a case? And that's who I hope people will vote for. There is a lot of accountability, because, as you mentioned, we do elect our justices, and it's not a lifetime appointment. There's a lot of opportunity to make sure we have people in there that we can trust.
Tell you what, we're up against our last break. It's a one-minute timeout. We have three individuals want to visit with you. We have Walt, Jeff, and Skip are both back. We're going to come right back after this one-minute timeout. Hey, we're back. This is Talk Back. 721-1290 is our number, and, and we're talking with Erin Ferris Olson. She's a candidate for the Clerk of the Montana Supreme Court, and we have a, a pretty brisk conversation going on there, and people want to jump in on it, and Walt is up next. Walt, good morning, you're on with Erin Ferris Olson. Go ahead, please.
Hi, Erin, thanks for, uh, uh, doing the show and taking my call. Uh, first, a comment is, over the years, and I've been, uh, practicing, uh, you know, CPA work, uh, for over 50 years in Montana, and I've worked with, uh, notable attorneys over the years, and, and they've told me, and they've confided in me, that they've always felt the Supreme Court made decisions on what the, the result they wanted first, and then they made the law form to, or their interpretations or substantiation fit it. I said, oh, that sounds like bottom-up, bottoms-up ruling. And so they said, yeah, that's, that's kind of our impression over the years. So, uh, because of that, and I've had, that's just not from one, that's from several attorneys that I've worked with, but, uh, when you talk about the lack of partisanship as being a good thing, uh, I, I see it as not being transparent. So I would be in favor of, uh, people picking a party and running under that party and running for the Supreme Court. Absent that, um, don't you think the best way to find out about these people is find out who the trial lawyers are supporting? That's my question.
Okay, thanks for the call, Walt.
Yeah, does it Thank you.
Should people seek and, and find out who the trial lawyers are supporting before they cast their, their vote?
Yeah, that's, that's my, that's what I do. Thank you.
Okay, Walt, thanks for the call. Uh, go ahead, Erin.
Um, yeah, that's really interesting. You know, I think one of the reasons why I, I'm personally have discomfort with the idea of having like an R, a D next to, uh, a judicial candidate, is that I think our two parties, I personally candidate is that I think our two parties, I personally think our two-party system is really limiting, you know? I had a parent, I have a parent who's a Republican, a parent who's a Democrat, and my perspective doesn't always align with one party or the other. And I guess when it comes to someone who's not just advocating for bills, I mean, I hope our, I hope our decision makers also think about things not so black and white, right? And, um, but you know, especially the judiciary, I think it's really important to be able to see things from many different sides and anticipate the outcomes and unanticipated outcomes. And having worked as a law clerk for the Montana Supreme Court, I remember having cases where the outcome may have served my interest in the moment, but now I look back on those decisions, you know, 15 years later and go, oh, I didn't anticipate that, you know? But I'm thankful that I helped craft an opinion that was based on the law because then at least I'm aligned with the law and I'm aligned with the, you know, the, the laws that were passed by the state of Montana and not kind of just throwing caution to the wind and allowing outcomes to just land wherever they may, um, just because of my personal political like, or personal preferences in the moment. Um, as far as trial lawyers though, I would say definitely attorneys and people who engage with the court have very good perspective on how the court operates. And what you'll see in our current political climate is that there are all kinds of interests that are weighing in at the court and in the court races. And so, yeah, I would say like, look at who actually works with the court the most, um, and see how those people, see what their perspective is on who can be trusted.
Okay. But I tell you what, Erin, Erin.
I'm totally going off my position, but.
No, that, that's okay. We're, we're running a little short of time. Want to get at least one more call in. Uh, Jerry, good morning. You're on with Erin Ferris Olson. Go ahead. What's your question, please?
Hey, yes. Thanks for getting me in. Uh, my question for that, uh, for Karen, and I thought, you know, she went into some detail about how great the Montana Supreme Court has been, uh, in overturning legislation. My question is then, the, the ultimate decider of facts is the U S Supreme Court. So how many times has the U S Supreme Court overturned the Montana Supreme Court? Because there, this, this federal Supreme Court is the ultimate determination of what is constitutional. Can she answer that?
All right. Thanks for the call, Jerry. Appreciate it. And we have about two minutes, Erin, before we have to let you go. So if you want to make it quick, go ahead, please.
Yeah. Um, well, I, I apologize if I, if I seem to be talking about of like a value judgment on the Supreme Court. I think what I was trying to establish was that they are making decisions about interpreting the constitution that are consistent. Um, but anyway, um, I don't actually know though. I'm sorry. I, that's like, that would be really great trivia. I'm not aware of, but I'm sorry, I'm not aware of, like what an actual rate is and I'd be nervous to even make anecdotes.
I'll tell, I'll tell you what, let, let's do, let's talk about Erin Ferris Olson. How do we, do you have a website? Uh, is there a way people want to donate to your campaign? Well, what, what do we need to do?
Yeah, you can go to www dot Erin for Montana dot com. That's all spelled out. Erin F O R Montana dot com. And, um, I hope there'll be like some record of this. I've been trying to, uh, there's a media page. So for those of you that kind of want to get what is Bowen saying, as well as what am I saying? There, they have links to some of the media that has been put out, um, with interviews with him and me on the media page there. So for those of you that really want to kind of dig in and say like, okay, let's just not, let's not just take her word for it. Let's see, you know, what he's saying as well. Um, that's a really, hopefully that will be a really helpful resource for your, for your voters. And yeah, I'm way far down the ballot, first time candidate, uh, statewide. So yeah, anybody who can tell their friends about this race, um, and about, you know, just get the conversation going around how important the role is and what we want to see in Montana for the future would be great.
Erin, you have been a great sport in answering all these questions and taking our calls, and we appreciate it very much. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a great day.
And the same to you, ma'am. All right. So, so Mr. Nick, woo, I got real busy there at the end. So what, what's coming up on tomorrow's fabulous show, sir?
A little different tomorrow. We're going to have global hotspots, which we normally would have Tuesday with Michael and me or dad. They'll be on from eight to nine thirty. Normally they're on eight thirty to 10, but again, they're on from eight to nine thirty and then nine thirty to 10. We'll have, uh, Judge Bittigery, who's also running some more politics. She'll be on from nine thirty to 10.
All right. So yeah, more about the Supreme Court. There you go. So anyway, uh, thanks for joining us, everybody. We appreciate it. And, uh, thanks to our, our county commissioners for being with us the first half of the show. And again, thanks to Erin Ferris Olson. And by the way, your calls make it happen and we, we appreciate every single one of you. So, uh, get out there and enjoy a cloudy day, but hey, it's fall in western Montana.
Question for you. Would you rather pay a hundred and fifty dollars a month or fifteen dollars a month to work out with the same high quality gym equipment? At Planet Fitness, you can get top tier equipment for fifteen dollars a month. Plus save twenty-eight dollars or more when you join now during our strong choice sale. Our weight's way the same, you just don't pay the same. Enjoy free fitness training and 24 hour access at most clubs, all in the judgment free zone. Join Planet Fitness today and save twenty-eight dollars or more when you join for one dollar down, fifteen dollars a month, cancel anytime. Deal ends October 10th. See club for details.